Tuesday, June the 16th, 2020 meeting of the Ardenham County Board of Commissioners. This is our pre-agenda meeting. At this time, I would ask County Manager Beth Jones if she would run through any adjustments to the agenda.
I do not have any adjustments to the agenda for this evening.
There are no adjustments to the agenda then. At the seven o'clock hour, we have two presentations. One to retiring Superintendent Brady Johnson from the Ardenham Statesville Schools. And the other is a presentation to Dr. Brian Beaver, who is moving out of state. We'll be losing him as our medical director. He's just done an outstanding job. We have an appointment before the board at seven o'clock by our health director, Jane Hinson, to give us an update on COVID-19, as well as Kent Green, I believe, is also going to participate in that update. No public hearings for this evening. We do have our pre-agenda administrative matters appropriate for consent. I would ask, is Commissioner Norman online?
He's on the phone now, yes.
Okay.
Hi, Jane.
How are you doing, Marvin? Good to hear you.
Good, sir.
So both Commissioner Norman and Vice Chairman Bowles will be joining us remotely at the seven o'clock hour. I don't think we could get Commissioner Bowles feet out of maybe sitting duties in the sand for the five o'clock meeting, but he's also going to participate. As people will recall, we have a remote access call-in as part of our rules that we adopted earlier this year. Those were limited to two per year. We suspended those rules during the COVID-19 state of emergency. As long as that state of emergency is in effect, we will be able to meet based on the number of people allowed in a room, which, by the way, we are exempt from. This is a government meeting. But we do need to maintain social distancing, both up here and in the audience. And those limitations of two meetings have been suspended as part of our process of adhering to some flexible approaches to the COVID-19. So at this time, I would ask our county manager to please summarize those items on the administrative docket that are appropriate for our consent agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item is a request from the Register of Deeds for approval of a contract renewal with COT Systems to provide records management. This is the current vendor that we have at our Register of Deeds office. Some fees have gone up since the last contract, but there is a note that the fees are transaction-based. And all of the funds for this will come out of the tech and preservation, depreciable assets line item. The contract has been vetted through our purchasing department, and Mr. Wyatt has gone through and made some requests, and COT has honored all of those requests. So this is continuing the contract with our current vendor, Register of Deeds.
Given the fact that this is a continuation of a pre-existing contact with some adjustments as far as cost, I waived off our Register of Deeds, Duck Wyatt, from having to be here present that we would be able to summarize in his absence. But he was prepared to be here. Okay? Any questions on this request?
Consent.
Consent.
Consent, Mr. Norman.
Yeah.
Thank you. The next item is a request from Ardenham Rescue for approval to withdraw funds from the Rescue Reserve account in the amount of $32,214 to purchase battery-operated rescue tools and associated equipment, and Mr. Green is here to make this request.
Mr. Green, and we have Chief Todd Linderman, I believe.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. As Ms. Jones said, this request is from Ardenham Rescue to purchase some battery-operated rescue extrication equipment, spreaders, ramps, what we would typically call the jaws of life, that type of equipment, and is replacing some older equipment that was in need of replacement. Anyway, the Rescue Reserve account currently has $32,000, I'm sorry, $63,705 in the account. That is incorrect. $13,850 in the reserve account, as well as $18,214 that was rolled over from last year. That combined totals $32,214. The remainder of the purchase will be made from their in-house funds. And Todd Linderman is the chief.
Can you speak at all?
I'm sorry, Mr. Norman?
Can you speak up? He can't hear you.
My apologies, Mr. Norman. Would you like me to repeat that, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, this time with pride.
With pride. Got a little off to a bit of a stumble. Currently, Ardenham Rescue has $32,214 in their reserve account. That is a combination of two accounts. Total purchase is $63,705. This is for battery-powered extrication equipment that will replace outdated equipment. The rest of the funds will come from their internal fundraising efforts. And Chief Linderman is here to answer any questions.
We don't need one of those, normally, there's like a budget amendment or...
No, the money is already in the account, so no budget amendment is necessary.
So internal department resources are what?
We do a Leonard drop.
Okay, so that's money that you raised?
Yes, sir. We have this in...
You're good.
Okay.
I just, you may want to speak briefly to what these power tools are going to enable you to be able to do, because you have limitations presently based on where you can get, how close you can get your truck to the scene.
Yes, sir. What this is, is Amicus come out this year with a brand-new four-stage pump, battery-operated heavy rescue tool. We were the first in North Carolina to receive these tools, because we have been Amicus people ever since we started. We took purchase of this back in March. We had ordered them in January before all this started. These are faster cutting tools and spreading tools than anything we have a line on or any department in this county has. They, like I said, they're four-stage pumped, they're quick, they will open and close before our lines will open and close on the truck. We can take them anywhere, so if we have a car off the roadway, we're not limited. We have 100 feet of line on the trucks, and that's all we have. We can throw them on our shoulders and go anywhere. Just grab an extra battery, and you've got about eight hours cutting time.
That's a great improvement to our capabilities.
Okay, good.
Okay, any additional questions for Chief Linderman?
Appreciate what y'all do.
Thank you, sir.
Consent?
Consent.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Green?
The next item is a request from the library for approval to apply for the State Library of North Carolina Cares Easy Grant to assist with bridging the digital divide, and Ms. Moore is here to make this request.
Yes, we're requesting to apply for a Cares Easy Grant.
Yes, sir. Amy's asking them to turn the mics up. Can you turn the mics up a little bit, if possible? Thank you.
We have a librarian. She's used to going shh.
He's going to turn them up, Marvin.
Are we good? Okay.
Yes.
We're requesting to apply for a Cares Easy Grant through the State Library in North Carolina. This will allow us to offer a new service, which will be Internet and Chromebooks to This will help with the intention of supporting workforce development and closing the homework gap, so we will be able to purchase hotspots and Chromebooks that residents will be able to check out and use outside the library in their homes. The grants for a total of $10,000 and no matching funds are required.
I tell you what, our library staff, there's nobody more persistent in seeking out grants, small amounts, medium-sized amounts, large amounts, doesn't matter, they all add up, and they typically don't require a match. And so we just salute you guys for pulling all the levers to try to get additional resources.
Thank you.
Also, from converting to the digital age, I mean, this is, this grant's all about, how many hotspots, how many hotspots would this enable you to have available for people to check out?
Through TechSoup, which is for libraries and nonprofit organizations, we're eligible to get 11, and it's unlimited access each month in a very small amount. It's $120 per hotspot that we're charged for an entire year for them to have unlimited data. And then it'll be a great opportunity to see the success of how popular they are being checked out, if they meet the needs of the community, if they work in the areas that there's not as much access. So it'll be a great opportunity for a year to try that. It's kind of a pilot project.
Were there any other comments or questions for Ms. Moore? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Consent, Marvin?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you have a consent?
Thank you, sir.
The next item is a request from tax administration for approval of May refunds and releases, and there are no commissioner names on this list.
Consent.
Consent.
Marvin's consent.
The next item is consideration by the Board of Commissioners for the adoption of a resolution regarding the 2020 business personal property late listing penalty. And I believe that Deputy County Manager Robertson is going to make this presentation to the board.
In North Carolina, business personal property tax listings are due by January 31st, and if they're not complete, businesses have the opportunity to request an extension until April 15th. So quite a few businesses did request that extension until April 15th. That date has come and gone, and in consideration of what the state of North Carolina and the U.S. government did in extending tax filing deadlines until July 15th, this resolution does the same thing. It extends from April 15th until July 15th those businesses who had applied for and received a properly timed extension request, and allows them until July 15th to submit those business personal property tax listings.
I'd just like to point out that these are businesses that had already requested an extension until April the 15th, and that has, you know, been granted.
That's correct.
What happened was, these are typically prepared by accountants as they work through a business tax return that is due April the 15th. And the state went on lockdown on March the 30th or 31st, and the accountants and the businesses all had difficulty getting the paperwork together and in and processed. And this is just a recognition that there were a lot, a lot that moved heaven and earth and got it in under the deadline, but some were unable to do so because of the COVID-19 restrictions placed by the state. And this just recognizes that they need a little extra measure of grace to allow them until July 15th. It does not cover businesses that were late filing that had not requested an extension.
That's correct.
And they still have to go before the Board of, if they have an issue, they go to the Board of Adjustment, I believe, or was it...
Equalization.
Board of Equalization and Review. There we go. To plead their case.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson. Any other questions?
Chairman Mallory, just one point of clarification. Just want to make sure that everyone understands, the resolution waives any penalty, not extending the filing deadline. We don't have the authority to extend the filing deadline, but it does waive the penalty until July 15th.
Yes, it's a distinction without much of a difference.
Correct. But it is a very important legal distinction.
That's right.
Our attorney is nodding her head.
Okay, consent?
Consent.
Yes.
Marvin's consent.
Thank you. The next item was a request from administration for consideration and adoption of the fiscal year 2021 budget ordinance. That is in the, in your commissioner packet, and it is a fairly lengthy ordinance. This budget ordinance takes into consideration the changes that were made at the budget workshop that we held. We had a two-day budget workshop, and it takes into consideration those changes. There were some requests where information was sent back, guidance was sent back to staff, and we made some additional changes, and all of that is in this current budget ordinance that's presented before you. One thing that we did receive questions about, and if the board will give me a small liberty of making this presentation, one thing we did receive a lot of questions about was the education funding for the schools. That is something that's new in this budget request, is the funding formula for the schools. And if somebody could get my screen going, I'll flip through these slides very quickly. But this is something that's new in this fiscal year, and if you'll remember, thank you, if you remember, we talked a little bit about where we were historically, that the focus for educational funding, and again, we fund three different educational entities, Ardenham Statesville, Mooresville Graded, and Mitchell Community College. The need historically was based on capital and facilities, and there was a mediated settlement that created the School Facility Task Force to vet those capital needs. As a result of that issue and that need, the solution to that was to fund current expense based on the increase in the county's revenue, and then to allocate additional pennies on the tax rate towards capital. We had a 2005 GO bond, we had a 2008 COPs, 2009 COPs, 2014 GO bond, and just recently, a 2020 GO bond, all of those to address capital and facility needs for the school systems. This is our current funding formula, and it is very complicated. I'll be the first to tell you, it is very complicated. Current expense, the increase in per pupil funding was based on the anticipated growth in county revenue. But then the complicated part came with capital debt and school safety and security. For Ardenham Statesville and Mooresville Graded, statutorily, we're required 30% of Article 40 sales tax, and that's distributed based on ADM, 60% of Article 42, and that again is distributed based on your average daily membership, ADM. Then we did an additional 2.7 cent of avalorum tax, and that was distributed based on ADM. And then the additional 7.5 cent of avalorum tax was based on the district valuation, so the valuation of the property in that school district, and it was allocated that way. 4.25 cent of avalorum was based on the percent of the project, so when that bond was passed, dependent on the projects that were in that bond, we allocated those funds accordingly. And Ardenham Statesville had 60.61% of the projects, Mooresville Graded had 30.04% of the project. And if you'll look over to the other side, Mitchell Community College had 9.35% of that. And then the additional one cent that was just approved in 2020, that was the one cent for the capacity bond, for the school capacity needs, and that again was allocated based on the percent of project. Ardenham Statesville had 63.69%, and Mooresville Graded had 27.98%, with Mitchell Community College at 8.33%. If you'll look on the far right side, Mitchell Community College, as far as their capital debt and school safety and security funding, was eight tenths of a cent of avalorum tax went to them. And then I talked about the 4.25 and the one cent. So that is, was the funding formula that we have used. This kind of shows you a little bit of a graph as far as historically how the requested current expense funding and the approved current expense funding looked. And if you'll look, before we had the recession in 2008, 2009, we really were funding based on their request. As a matter of fact, in 2007, we funded more than what the request was. So, but when we had the recession, that's when things kind of came off kilter, and we had to scale back. And really, we have not gotten back to meeting their current expense requests. It's, if you, so if you'll look, the green bar has not met that gold bar, so their requests have been more than what we were able to fund.
If you go back, can I just make a...
Yes, sir.
You go back and look, though, is, is once we kind of came out of the recession, because we're looking at the green bar, starting in FY 11, that, that number goes up every single year.
Correct. Yes, we have increased their funding every year. We just have not been able to fund the, the level of their actual request. So we have not cut them from previous year's funding. We have, we have not cut them. The only time we cut them was during the recession, but...
And we cut everybody.
And we cut everybody. Yes, sir, absolutely.
But also, we can also say that there's a lot of their, if you look at just their requests, a lot of times their requests are inflated, knowing that their budgets... requests, a lot of times their requests are inflated, knowing that their budget's going to not be fulfilled per their request. So some of that stuff, if you look at it just based on that alone, it, it might be a little misleading. I just wanted that for the record also.
I will say that I should have added fiscal year 21 on this graph, because with the new funding formula, their initial budget that they were considering was around 43 million, and we're funding them over 45. So our green bar will exceed that yellow bar. This does show you a quick snapshot of capital and debt funding, and it does show the substantial increases that we have put towards capital and debt funding for the school systems. So as I said before, the previous concern and issue was capital and, and debt with facilities. Now we feel like we have addressed that issue, and upon their request, they said, "Look, we really would like for you to go back and revisit how you fund education. We need more current expense funding. That is where our major need is, and that's where we would like for you to look at a new funding formula that address that need."
And they said they didn't need as much capital.
Correct.
It was a switch.
One of the things, yes, one of the things we talked about was, in order to do that, we would be shifting some funding from capital to current expense. They understood that and said they were fine with that because the need was in current expense. So understanding that, we went and started looking at different funding formulas. Here's kind of where we came down to, and we looked at a lot of different, a lot of different issues, but I will say, one of the things that we hear is that we, from a comparison standpoint, it's difficult to compare apples to apples when you look at how we fund education, because we were actually funding differently than other counties were. We were putting a lot of our additional funding into capital. And the way you measure funding historically and throughout the state is per pupil, is funding current expense on a per pupil basis. So we were falling low when you measure the per pupil allocation. We were measuring low based on our counterparts throughout the state, other counties, and how they were funding. So we went and we looked at an analysis of that per pupil funding throughout the state of North Carolina, and we looked at these different categories. We looked at counties with multiple school districts, because we do have multiple school districts. So we said, "Okay, how do we compare with other counties that have more than one public school system and public school district?" Well, the average, and we looked at the 1819 average, because that was our reappraisal year. So we looked at that to start with. And if you look at what the average per pupil funding was for counties with multiple school districts, it was $1,755 per pupil. This is comparing back to the 1,675 that we were at, okay? So it was higher if we look at, at how those counties fund. Then we looked and we said, "Okay, well, what about the counties that are around us?" We have nine counties that are touching Aridale County. If we look at our contiguous counties, what, what is their average? And you can see it was 1764. Then we said, "Okay, what's the statewide average of all 100 counties in the state of North Carolina? What's the statewide average?" That was 1791. Then we said, "Okay, what about counties that have similar ADM to Aridale County?" And then we looked at a spread of counties that were 20% above us with ADM and 20% below us with ADM, and that was 1896. Then we also looked at counties with similar populations to Aridale County, and we again looked at a spread of 25% above ADM and 25% below ADM, and that was 1940. And then we looked at counties with similar property tax revenues and the same spread, 25% spread above and below. The chief reason we threw out the property tax revenue is because most of those counties in that category are resort counties, and they have high property tax revenue, but they don't have a lot of children to educate because they're resort areas. They're the coastal counties or the, the mountain counties. And it really wasn't a good comparison, because if you looked at their, the number of students was very low compared to ours. So that one was not a good comparison for us, and so we, we threw that one out. When we started looking at the counties in these different groups, really, the group that, that closely fit Aridale County were the counties with similar ADM. So that's why it's highlighted in green, and that was 1896 as far as per pupil expenditure. So we came up with a new funding formula, and, and I'm gonna, this is a very complicated slide, but we came up with a new funding formula where each reappraisal year, the county would get the average per pupil funding of all counties, that group that I just told you about, all counties that have an ADM that is 20% above and 20% below Aridale County's ADM. That per pupil funding average will be the new funding level for Aridale County for that, for that current funding level, whichever is higher. So every reappraisal year, which is every four years for us, we would go and get a new average. If that average is higher than what we are currently funding, we will increase that per pupil funding to that new average. If that average is lower, we will leave our per pupil funding where it is. So our per pupil funding will never decrease. At worst, it will stay the same. Then each subsequent year, which is not a reappraisal year, we will adjust that based on the Consumer Price Index. So we will adjust that. However, it will not exceed the estimated property tax revenue growth for the upcoming fiscal year. So if we hit massive inflation, and let's say it's 10%, and our revenue growth has only grown 4%, we can't, we can't give more than what we're receiving in. So there's that, there's that caveat. That's for current expense funding. For capital funding, we'll do what statutorily required, as I said before, the 30% of Article 40 and the 60% of Article 42. And then debt funding, education debt will be paid out of ad valorem tax. So we will pay that out of the county's ad valorem tax for that educational debt. The school safety and security budget, this was a budget that we created, hoping that the quarter cent sales tax would be approved, and that is where this money would go to fund those school safety and security needs for the educational entities. I, I think I'm preaching to the choir and saying that did not happen, so that budget does not have a revenue stream for it. So our proposal is to do away with the safety and security budget. However, we did make some commitments to the schools that we would finish the one-time capital needs that were identified. So if you remember, that safety and security budget, to get it started, we put a half cent in, and the schools put a half cent in. We gave the schools their half cent back. We left the county's half cent of ad valorem. We left the county's half cent in there, and we're going to use that to finish funding those one-time capital needs. Once we have those done and satisfied, this budget will go away, because the revenue source is not there to continue it. SROs. SROs were anticipated to be funded out of this safety and security budget. Again, that, that did not happen, so the SROs will go back and come out of the current expense. So with the increased funding that they're getting, that will come back out of current expense. The Board of Education, they will determine what their needs are regarding SROs, and then they will contract with those law enforcement agencies to provide those. And if you remember, we have one additional SRO in our budget as far as our new position, that's an additional SRO that has been requested by Aridale Statesville Schools, and we're adding that position upon their request. The county charges the school systems for 10 months of salary and benefits for those SROs, and then we cover, and then the other law enforcement entity providers will cover the equipment, training, vehicles, all of those additional items, they will cover that as the provider of that service. Commissioner Hough, did you have a question?
I just wanted to clarify, I'd gotten a couple of calls after our public hearing. I want to clarify, we did not stop funding safety and security. What we did is, when we changed our funding formula, is the revenue goes to the school systems, and the Boards of Education make those decisions as to SROs, nurses, counselors, teachers, teacher supplements, whatever they are. So I wanted people to know, we just moved that money to them for their decision, and so we did not stop funding safety and security.
No, it's coming out of the current expense budget now. Absolutely, that was a good point. So when we looked at the validation of this, of this new funding formula, there were several things that we looked at. It real allocates the existing funding from capital to current expense. It meets the operational budget requests of the school systems, and it maintains sufficient, sufficient capital contributions. It creates a clear formula that both the Board of Education and the Board of County Commissioners know ahead of time, and we can prepare our budgets based on that, and that is key, because it's difficult to prepare a budget when you don't know how much money you're going to have. This establishes, establishes it, and it makes sure that those requests and those, what's recommended and approved, they will align going forward. It recenters the responsibility, exactly what Commissioner Hough was pointing out, it recenters the responsibility for safety and security and well-being back to the Board of Education. They're the customer. They tell us what they need from us as the provider for those school resource officers, et cetera. It modifies our funding formulas similar to other counties, so we're comparing apples to apples. It takes us from 56th in the state in local current expense funding to 40th, and this was based on 1819 per pupil funding. So when we did that research and that analysis and looked at those average, that's based on the 1819 per pupil funding. I will certainly, when, when that information comes out, when all the counties report, when they pass their budgets, I will certainly give you that updated ranking when all the counties.
Add in context, what, we have like 107 systems in the state. So being 56, wasn't like we were at the bottom.
No, not at all. Actually, I think there's 117 school systems in the state.
We were, we were average on expense, and on capital, we were way up high.
There was no comparison with capital, and really, that wasn't anything that anybody was comparing. What was getting compared was the current expense, and we were about average, you're right.
Being on the board that wrote the checks, we did care.
Correct.
So.
Well, and you, people need to realize also that that average, average expense per student is supplemented by the state and the federal government.
Correct.
And we don't get a lot of love from either entity. Other counties are able, you know, to have a lower county contribution, but that's more than made up by federal and state contributions based on their economic situation. So, you know, we, we carry the freight here.
Absolutely.
What is it, there's, what, 18 of the counties are considered high wealth? Is it 18? Or, is it like 82?
About 20.
22? Okay, yeah, okay, maybe it's 22. So that means that there's 78 counties that get low wealth, okay? Which if 78 of your count, I would say that's average wealth. But, so basically, if you're in that high wealth, you're.
You don't get it.
You're penalized, period. That's in, and, and that happens for education funding, that happens at economic development time. There's a lot of ways that we are penalized for, basically, for being a prosperous county.
Absolutely.
If I can clarify, I just want to say for the record again, that for every, every penny we bring in, the school education, we invest half of that.
Yeah.
Every, every penny that comes in.
50% of every penny goes to education. That's correct.
For people, the reason we're adding this is not because we don't think Ms. Jones knows, not because we don't think each other doesn't know, is this is for folks who are listening in, in the audience, who might not know the, the history of education funding, and a lot of, you know, just because somebody tells you something, or just because you read it on Facebook, doesn't mean that it's true.
Right.
And we have to deal with truth, because we get audited, you know? We're, we're required to tell the truth. Even if we were crooked, we couldn't lie about these numbers. Okay.
And, and this is important, because as we've, as we have presented this and we discussed about the new funding formula, we've received questions. So, you know, we certainly are, this is transparency at its best, to go, you know, walk everyone through that funding formula and what it looks like and how we arrived at it. The last point on this is it makes us comparable to Cabarrus County, and really, that is kind of our benchmark county that's in our region, in our area, because they are the only other tier three county that's adjacent to us, other than Mecklenburg, and that's, you know, we, we don't compare ourselves to the great state of Mecklenburg. But it, they are kind of a good comparable for us, and if you look at what their per pupil funding was for 1819, it was 1852, and what we would propose is 1896. Again, this is based on 1819. So let me kind of take you through what the numbers look like for, that's proposed in this budget. So the recommended education funding for this upcoming fiscal year takes our per pupil funding from 1675, which was the current fiscal year, to 1940, which is the next proposed fiscal year. Now, that 1940, that goes back to that 1896, which was that average, and we increased it based on December 2019, U.S. Department of Labor total unadjusted Consumer Price Index was, which was 2.3%, okay? So we adjusted that average based on the CPI, which takes us to 1940. And that is what we're recommending as the next fiscal year per pupil funding of 1940. This is what it looks like as far as your current expense and capital outlay for our three different educational entities. And if you will see, you can see, there's a shift of funding from capital to current expense, but I will add, there is still an overall increase, and that's important. Again, we have not cut funding to our educational entities. And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that the Board may have, but I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to make this, because we have received some questions, and I thought that was important to point this out.
So on a classroom with 25 children, which I know some classrooms have 21, some might have a few more than 25, that's, that's $6,600 per classroom, for every classroom in the county. That's not chump change.
No, it's not.
One thing that I would need is clarifying or just discussion is the capital. That's, that's $7 million in capital, is really there for primarily maintenance, you know, issues in small projects. The large projects have been identified previously in the, by the Facilities Task Force, which proposed a facilities improvement plan. And that was a 10-year list of projects by three different phases, and the first phase included the recommendation of a new high school and a new middle school for Mooresville and a high school for Aridale Statesville, and then additional projects that both systems and Mitchell College identified. Based on dollars that we had saved in the construction process of the bond that was passed in 2014, as those projects were developed and completed in different tranches, we ended up with almost $21 million of savings that were then reallocated back to the school systems for application to that, those first projects identified in Phase 1. The, which, in addition to additional dollars that the Mooresville Graded School District borrowed on their own authority, they were able to complete all of their projects in Phase 1. The passage of the bond completed their middle school project, so they don't have anything left in Phase 1 that's not already funded. And that first phase was for three years, and we, you know, we only adopted, we had that, this, the first cut presented to us at our February midwinter retreat last year, this year, but about a year ago. And then we ultimately, they amended it based on the, the funding that we had available, they reordered some priorities, and achieved some additional savings. Mitchell College in particular achieved some significant savings in terms of renovating their main building. And as a result, we were able to basically take care of most of those Phase 1 projects, and with the passage of the bond, took care of the two major projects. and with the passage of the bond, took care of the two major projects. There is left a relatively small amount of projects for the Aridale Statesville schools. Now, the funding stream that is available here, the $7 million, to the extent that that doesn't cover maintenance issues or that covers maintenance issues and they have extra dollars left over, then those are dollars that are available to continue to whittle away at those Phase 1 projects. To the extent that they sell properties that come before us for approval, if they get dollars out of them, then that's available for their, you know, capital expenditures, which, you know, I would expect if you're following a priority distribution, would go to additional completion of those Phase 1 projects. But to the extent that we haven't paid for all those things, then the major projects that have been identified in the Facilities Improvement Plan then just get stitched together in our County Capital Improvement Plan. So, you know, capital are us. That's what the county does. And so we will take a look at, okay, what are those projects? What additional funding streams do we have in terms of dollars coming in next year so that we can whittle away at those Phase 1 projects? The funding there for capital for Aridale Statesville Schools is there for maintenance, is for replacement of computers, and so those dollars should be sufficient to accomplish that.
Roofs and HVAC, right?
Yeah. Basic heavy maintenance and some small projects. So anyway, so they have their capital needs being met, and we've met those, I think, in spades in terms of the schools that are being built and through both bond issues. And through this formula, we're able to finally address their shortfalls in normal operating expenses. Does it cover every want? No, it doesn't cover everything. They have to make some hard choices about, you know, what they want to prioritize as far as, you know, the amount and number of SROs versus counselors versus nurses versus supplements for teachers to be competitive with our contiguous counties. So they have a budget that they can make those calls. There's, it's not enough to cover everything that they would like, but we don't have enough money to cover everything that we would like to do. We, you know, it was a bloody, there was blood on the floor in our capital improvement program discussion about cutting. We had to cut a lot of projects that we all wanted to do, simply because this was before COVID.
Yeah.
But that's just, you know, what comes with the territory. It's hard government work. But, you know, we have maintained the same tax rate for general operations of the county and are the 13th lowest tax rate in the state. And the only counties that are lower are some of the very counties that Ms. Jones referenced that have significant tax revenues based on being in the mountains or on the beach and not a lot of kids to educate. And so when you compare type counties, there is no interior county that compares to us other than Moore County, which has Pinehurst in it. It's kind of a resort destination, right? A lot of retirees and not a lot of kids. We have a growing economy and a lot of children, and that's a good thing because we have a growing workforce for many years. Any other questions or comments relevant to...
I'll hold mine to seven.
I would like to point out just a few other things, and I know that the board is aware of this, but this was a difficult budget to do. We basically did two budgets, one pre-COVID, one post-COVID. And we have had some shortfalls we've had to make up, not just in the next budget that we're proposing, but the current budget. And I just want to commend staff for, I mean, they have really done an amazing job helping us look to find where can we save, where can we cut, where can we not spend things, all different kinds of things. I've actually gone and talked to some departments about my budget recommendation, why I recommended what I did. One of the popular, one of the things that weren't very, wasn't very popular was no increases for county staff. And that was difficult to do because when a crisis hit, county staff responded and they were there and they answered the call morning, noon, and night. And that was a difficult decision to make. But I will say one thing, and we have some more updated numbers that was not known during this budget message, and I just want to point this out. Our unemployment rate going into this in March was 4%. That was our unemployment rate. State and national rate was 4.4%. So we were tracking better than the state and the nation in our unemployment rate. And that was in March. In April, our unemployment rate was 14.2. 14.2. And those are just the individuals that were able to get into the system, to get filed and get into the system. The peak for the past 33 years was during the Great Recession that we had, and that was 10.9. So while we believe that this downturn and this negative impact is temporary, it was the direct correlation of basically taking our economy to a screeching halt. You know, there were stay-at-home orders, businesses were mandated to close to try to keep everybody safe and keep everybody protected, but that had a direct impact on our revenues and that had a direct impact on the job market and the jobs that our citizens had. So until we can, we can get things turned around and we can see an increase in our sales tax and we can get our citizens back to work, then we're going to, we're going to see a lull. But again, I believe strongly, it's not as dismal as the budget you have in front of you. This is a worst-case scenario budget that we have presented with the hope that as things pick back up and sales tax picks back up, as we slowly move through the phases to reopen and we do those safely and wisely and we get our economy going again, we'll be able to come back in December and put things in. And yes, we have a priority list of items. The board has requested that we put those priority list items, and we are certainly doing that. And the top of the priority list is to recognize the county employees that have been here through thick and through thin for increases. So I would be remiss if I did not point that out, but I did want to say that because that has not been the most popular decision, but I do stand by it because increases, you have to have a sustainable revenue source because that's not a one-time capital purchase that you don't have to do the next year and the next year. It does add to the base and you've got to make sure that revenue is there to sustain it. I'm going to turn around to my finance officer. Deb Chee can see if she has anything else she would like to add regarding the budget ordinance or additional information for the board to consider.
If it's the pleasure of the board, I will go through the recap that I went through two weeks ago, giving you the amounts for each of our funds. We also have some additional capital project funds that we'll approve tonight that we do at year-end just to appropriate investment earnings or sales tax refunds. And we have two of the school funds that are wanting to, they're getting close to the end of the project and they're wanting to shift some money around. So I will present that at 7 o'clock unless you want me to go through that now.
7 o'clock?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate all the number crunching. It's been like a taffy pool. Get this thing to work. I suspect there's a whole couple of generations that doesn't know what a taffy is. Okay.
That's all that we have.
That's all.
I'm sorry.
Consent on the, well, do we want to hold that out for 7 o'clock? Hour, we'll do that. And on the other matters, we've got consents. And we'll have an omnibus motion for approval of the consent agenda at 7 o'clock. Appointments to boards and commissions, we have a number of different appointments. And I believe that probably lashes up with, we don't have any, last I checked, we don't have any excess applicants for positions that are available.
No, sorry, we do not.
We'll just announce those at the 7 o'clock hour and entertain, once again, an omnibus motion. Any unfinished business that is anticipated? We do have a public comment period this evening. New business? And the county managers' report, any previews?
The only preview that I have is just to announce that we are continuing to do community testing for COVID-19. And I'm sure that I'm stealing some thunder from our health director, so I apologize to Ms. Henson as I do this. But we do have a partnership with an agency that's doing this testing for us going forward. We have, Health Department has manned all the mass testing events up until this point, and it has been a difficult task to do that and continue to do the close contact tracing and things of that nature. So we have partnered with a company to do these mass testing events, and they have them scheduled for each Tuesday and Thursday from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. through July the 9th. Tuesdays will be at a Statesville location, and you can go to our website to get these locations. The first one will be at the Boys and Girls Club on Cochrane Street, the next one, Western Avenue, the next one, Mitchell Community College, and then back at Western Avenue Baptist Church. And then the Thursdays will all be at Mooresville High School in Mooresville. So we're doing Tuesdays at a Statesville location, Thursdays will be at Mooresville High School. So please visit our county website to get more information. We have different flyers for the weeks that tell you, you know, where to go. You do need to schedule a virtual visit so they can get some information regarding, you know, are you experiencing any symptoms, things of that nature, which helps them better prepare. And they kind of know the number of people that are coming in so they can make sure they have all the appropriate testing supplies. That's all.
Thank you. We'll now be moving into a closed session for three items. One, the first is an attorney-client issue pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, subsection A3. The second is economic development pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, subsection A4. And the final is a personnel issue pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, subsection A6. We'll be having those meetings in the South Wing Conference Room, so nobody has to move here if they don't need to. And we will be moving on to our closed session and re-adjourn here at 7 o'clock.